As well as how she did, what passed through the town. Thank you that your ways are always good, pleasing and perfect. Thank you for our new chairman. May you grant favor success in all her endeavors. May you guide our leaders and councillors with wisdom and discernment to make decisions for the good of the people. May you bless Watford with your peace, protection and prosperity in Gensisland. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Before we move to the rest of the agenda, I would like to welcome, I would like to welcome the new Hollywood councillor, Asma Siliman. And returning councillor for Oxen, Ian Sharp. I would like to remind everyone to stand when they speak. If you wish to speak or when I ask you to, to vote, please raise your hand clearly so that the officers can see you. Only turn on your microphone when I invite you to speak. We are not expecting any fire drills this evening. Therefore, if the alarm does sound, please follow the direction of the Democratic Services Manager, Sandra over there, and leave as quickly as possible via the fire exits and make your way to the pond where we will gather and check everyone is accounted for. Please do not use the lifts. If anyone has any difficulty using the stairs, please speak to the Democratic Services Manager, Sandra. We move on to item four, apologies for absence. Are there any apologies for absence, please?
Apologies being received from councillors Ahmed, Varagio, Johnson, Rodriguez and Saunders.
Thank you. Item five, declarations of interest. Does any member have any declarations of interest today? Thank you. Item six, minutes of the meeting. The members agreed that the minutes of the meeting held on 11th of March 2025. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. I would like to welcome the new and returning councillors following the recent elections. I would like to thank those councillors who retired this year. I would like to thank Mark Tumman MP and Chris Newstone for the support they've given to their community during this year as councillors. I also like to welcome our new returning Chief Finance Officer, Isabel Burton, in here. I would like to read a statement regarding the situation in India and Pakistan in recent time. Members of the council, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the recent and deeply troubling escalation between India and Pakistan over the long dispute region of Kashmir. During this period of heightened tension, many lives were tragically lost, not only in Kashmir but also in India and Pakistan. Civilians and military personnel alike were caught in the crossfire and our thoughts are with all those affected. Thanks to diplomatic efforts, including from the United States and the UK government and other international partners, a ceasefire has now been agreed. We welcome this development, not only as a moment of relief, but also as an opportunity. This pause in hostilities offers a vital chance for all sides to step back, reflect and find a path forward through dialogue rather than confrontation. Longstanding issues must be addressed, but they must be addressed peacefully with respect for life, dignity and international norms. Here in Watford, we are proud of our diverse communities. People of India, Pakistan and Kashmir heritage have lived here together in harmony for decades. They've built families, businesses, friendship and shared a sense of belonging. This diversity is not just a demographic fact, it is one of our greatest strengths. We also recognize that global events, particularly those involving communities with deep emotional and familial ties, can have direct impact locally. In recent weeks, there have been attempts, whether through online platforms or media from overseas, to stay division and mistrust. These efforts have not borne fruition and must not be allowed to succeed. In Watford, we build bridges, not barriers. Our response must be to come together, to show that respect, unity and compassion are stronger than any force that seeks to divide us. We are grateful for the work of local organizations such as One Vision, Watford Interfaith Association, as well as places of worship such as mosques, churches, goodwara, synagogues and temples, working every day to foster dialogue and bring people together. Their work is vital and this council thanks them for all they do. But the responsibility does not rest on one group. We all have a part to play as a mayor, as councillors, as residents, as leaders and as neighbours. Each of us can foster calm, protect our shared values and ensure Watford remains a place of peace and belonging. Let us use this moment not only to support peace abroad, but to strengthen unity at home. In Watford, we stand together, we choose dialogue, not division. We remain committed to the values that bind us up. Thank you. I would like to remind all members that you need to sign up for the mandatory training for the Development Management Committee and licensing. If you are appointed tonight as a member of one of those committees or intern substitute this year, if you are unable to make any of the mandatory trainings, please let the Democratic Services Manager know as soon as possible. Also, scrutiny training should be completed if you did not attend the training last year. Again, this is compulsory. If you are appointed to one of the scrutiny communities, unlikely to be a substitute in the future. Members have received an email asking them to bring their laptops to enable the team to update them. Please read the content carefully and follow the instructions. A few months ago, all members received an email asking them to complete an IT training exercise. If you have not yet completed the training, please do so as soon as possible. An email from the mayor and chief executive were sent earlier this week, reminding members of the importance of ensuring we position to reduce the prospect of cyber, the likelihood of cyber attack. The Democratic Services Manager will be sending further email about this matter. Item eight, questions by members of the council under procedure rule ten. No written questions have been received. Item nine, petitions presented under procedure rule two. No petitions have been received. Item ten, business especially brought forward by the chairman or head of paid service. No urgent business. Item eleven, notice of constitution of political party groups. I now turn on to item eleven. Council is asked to report, know the reports of the Democratic Services Manager, secreted as part of this agenda. The report is noted. Item twelve, notification to council of members of cabinet and portfolio holders. The mayor has given notice of members of his cabinet. Members are asked to know the mayor's appointment. I would like to invite my chair to move the report. You can have up to seven minutes.
Thank you very much councillor Esipet and I won't take the seven minutes. I would like to start by congratulating you on your elevation to the position of chairman. We're looking forward to working with you this year. And it's great to have so many people visiting us for this event. I think it's the most we've ever had a full council and so you are all very welcome. We don't normally have PMS at our meetings, but I think we should do. I would of course like to thank councillor Dawn Allen Williamson for her year of service. This agenda item is about the cabinet and portfolio holders. I would like to start just by thanking every member of the cabinet for the services they provide. So thank you to councillor Dykson, Hattonson, Williams, Rodriguez, Clathery and Stokesbury. And I'm really pleased that we're having an additional member of the cabinet joining us, councillor Sham Begum. Sham is Watford born and bred. She went to school in Herford, in Cherry Tree and then to Westfield. And for the last 20 years has served in the financial sector, working for NatWest. And of course, she's been given the finance portfolio. Sham, I'm really looking forward to working with you and congratulating you on this position. And with that, I move this item.
Councillor Disa. I call on councillor Patterson to second the report.
Thank you, chairman. I second this report and reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this report? Councillor Ben.
Thank you, Chair. And also associating myself with, again, congratulations to yourself and to for her last year. And I'd just say to the mayor, yes, because you've noticed your cabinet, obviously, that you've now got eight members in you split finance for away from the council of three years. But I just wondered, and that's fine. So will we get rate with her reports to all the different portfolio holders? As you see this here, will you have a chance here to next question?
If you're happy coming to respond to that. Yeah, the system of reporting and obviously for councils to hold the executive programme remains the same. So I'm sure that councillor Begum looks forward to attending the finance briefing committee, the audit committee and all of those that look at the finances of the council. We all know how important it is to get the finances right. We see across the country councils having to declare themselves bankrupt when they don't manage their finances well. We're going through a really important period of local and the organisation. And of course, we'll make sure we continue to deliver excellent services for our residents and that we manage our finances well, which is something that is absolutely critical to the success of this council.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson.
Thank you, chairman. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Thank you. The appointment, sorry. Oh, sorry. I didn't see you, sorry. Councillor Stillman.
I just want to say a few lines. I'm not going to take lots of lines. First of all, congratulations, honour.
Thank you.
And secondly, it's an honour to be a part of this council. I look forward to working with you and the Watford council staff to serve the residents of my Holy Bell ward and to bring forward the opportunity of the presidency.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. The appointment by the mayor for this, for his cabinet is noted. Item thirteen, amendments to the constitution. Council has received a report of the monitoring officer requesting council's approval to the changes of the constitution as detailed in the report. Can I follow the mayor to propose the report? You have up to seven minutes.
I won't take my seven minutes. Thank you, Chairman. And I forgot to welcome Asma, so welcome and to councillor Sharp. Welcome back. It's great to have Ian back as a councillor in this council. The amendments to the constitution are hopefully really straightforward. The senior management structure has changed and so this is to affect the constitution to recognise that. There's also items in there in relation to the museum and the purchasing of items. I think it's just a tidying up exercise and hopefully not at all controversial.
Thank you. I call on councillor Patterson to second the report.
I'm a second to the chair from all of our colleagues.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak before we begin? Councillor Patterson.
I have nothing further to add, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now ask members to vote. All those voting to adopt the timetable for meeting, raise your hand. Sorry. No, sorry. Thank you. Does council approve the amendments of the constitution as set out in the report? All those voting for? All those against? Any abstentions? Carried, carried. Thank you. The report sets out fourteen programme for meetings twenty five, twenty six. The next report set out a draft programme for meetings for the year twenty five, twenty six. A draft of the timetable was secreted before the agenda was published. And members were given the opportunity to comment. I will move the report. I call on councillor Patterson to second the report.
Thank you, chairman. I second the report and just want to thank officers for the work that I've been producing. And yes, I know it's not easy to organise the scheduled meetings and you don't come half the day, so thank you.
Thank you. The motion is to adopt the timetable for meeting twenty twenty five. Does anyone wish to speak before we vote? Thank you. I will now ask members to vote. All those voting for adopting the timetable, please raise your hands. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. I declare the programme of meeting has been noted. Item fifteen, establishment of committees and appointment of chairs and vice chairs. This report sets out establishment of committees and appointment of chairs and vice chairs for twenty five, twenty six year. I'll move the following from the chair. Does council agree the establishment of politically balanced committee as set out in paragraph four point one of the report? I call on council Patterson to second the motion.
I second this motion, Sharon.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on this motion? All those voting for, please raise your hand. Anyone against? Any abstentions?
That is carried, thank you.
I will now move the following from the chair. Does council agree the establishment of the non-politically balanced committees as set out in paragraph four point two of the report? I call on councillor Patterson again.
Thank you, chairman. I second this motion.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak? All those voting for? All those against? Any abstentions?
The chairman, that is carried.
Thank you. Appointment of members of committees. Council is asked to agree the appointment of members of politically balanced committee as set out in paragraph four point three point one of the report and non-politically balanced as set out in paragraph four point two. A list of nominations received is attached as appendix one to the report, which was updated and secreted. I will now move the membership of the committees and subcommittees as set out in the updated appendix one from the chair. I call on councillor Patterson again to move the motion.
Thank you, chairman. I second the motion for the committee membership. Thank you.
Thank you. All those voting for, please show your hands. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions?
Chairman, the information is carried.
Thank you. Now we come to chairs and vice chairs. Council is asked to appoint chairs and vice chairs to the committees listed in four point one and four point two of the report. A list of nominations received is attached in appendix one, updated and secreted. The first one we look at is finance scrutiny committee, appointment of chair. I would remind members that chair is by convention a member of the opposition and must be a member of the overview scrutiny committee. Councillor Khan is a member of both committees and has been nominated as a chair as set out on the appendix. Does anyone wish to comment on this nomination? Thank you. Second, thank you. Again, by convention, we go to vice chair of overview and scrutiny committee. By convention, this is a member of the opposition. The proposal is set out in the appendix. Is a councillor things that is nominated to be vice chair? Does anyone wish to comment on this nomination? I'll move the following recommendations from the chair. Does council agree the appointments of the chair and vice chairs as shown in appendix one as amended? I call on councillor Patterson again. Second.
Thank you, Chair. Second nomination from the
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? All those voting for, please show your hands. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you.
And then those appointments carried.
Thank you. Item sixteen, appointment of representatives of the council in outside bodies twenty twenty five, twenty six. Item sixteen is the appointment of representatives of council on outside bodies and to note the mayor appointments. Firstly, members are asked to note the appointments made by the mayor to those organisations that relate to executive functions. Does anyone want to speak? Mayor Peter.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to make one change to the listed representatives. So for the Armed Forces Government Board, I'd like to nominate Councillor Hattonson, which relates to her housing and wellbeing portfolio. So if that can be altered to be Councillor Hattonson for that Armed Forces Government Board. Thank you.
The report is noted. A list of nominations to appointments made by councils attached to the report. I'll move the following recommendation from the chair. Can I ask councillor Patterson again?
I second the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council agree to the nominations to the appointments made by the council? All those in favour, please show your hands. All those, thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you. The appointment by the council are approved. Item seventeen, neighbourhood locality fund. Council has received a report from Democratic Services Officer and monitoring officer who sets out the annual report of neighbourhood locality funds and updated guidance. Can I ask councillor Walkin to move the report? You have up to seven minutes.
Thank you very much, chairman. And to start, I should congratulate you on your elevation to the period. It's a great honour to have you leading us and I look forward to being chaired by you for next year. In the absence of councillor Rodriguez, I'm delighted to hear this report on the councillor's use of the neighbourhood low county budget for this new year, twenty four, twenty five. As we have so many visitors here, work explaining that each ward has two and a half thousand pounds. Three thousand, thank you. You think you're all, thank you. I'm going to get the report. Which can be used to support the community and it is a wonderful way of just showing the community that we care, what we do and how we support it. So I appreciate my name. The board team spent a combined total of thirty four thousand and thirty eight pounds, which represents minus five percent of the overall budget. And I think we should congratulate the team that achieved in that high figure. Individual ward extended the range from sixty two percent to one hundred and forty one percent of their allocated budgets with an average spend of two thousand eight hundred and forty six pounds per ward. And in the report, there was a breakdown by ward, which you would like to read it. The exception overspend wealthy central cancers could receive permission from the chief financial officer and carry forward the remaining budget from the twenty three, twenty four budget to twenty four, twenty five to enable them to support a significant project. The excellent report by officers analyzes the types of projects supported by councillors without mentioning comparisons. The combined expenditure of schools, youth groups and sports groups accounted for twenty four percent of the total budget, compared with fourteen percent from twenty three, twenty four. Creative clean up and skips is surprising here. Saw a decrease from last year from nineteen percent of total expenditure to ten percent. On the other hand, foreign areas produced higher proportion of charities, youth groups and sports beauty street. Looking ahead and following recommendations put forward by the neighbourhood low county fund working group, which I would please be a member, we encourage wider awareness of the scheme later this year. A new application form will be launched, so enabling residents to access directly. But please get this word out through any group that you know. Look for the website and if you've got these schemes, you have supported the true application. Finally, if residents want to understand how the scheme works and is administered and you can't sleep at nights, I would prefer you to attend the run of the council.
Thank you. Can I now call on councillor Dykson to second report? You have up to five minutes.
Thank you, chairman. I second the note of the report and reserve my rights to speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this report? Councillor Ben.
Thank you, Chair. Can councillor Walkin let us know then when we like to, when is that like to go live? And if he's going to be able to get in touch online, he'd recommend.
The simple answer is I can't say because actually it's something that has to councillor Rodriguez. I'm only representing him for the points that are presented in the report. I can say that I'm very keen that it should go live as soon as possible because I think it does open up the whole process to the community. But whether any officer can answer that question, I'm sure I can't.
For councillors from an officer perspective, I've been waiting for the approval of this report this evening. All of the work to get that process ready and live has been undertaken. So as soon as possible after tonight's meeting, that process will be going live. But we officers will communicate with members so that you're aware when that process goes live.
Councillor Dykson, do you want to speak? Councillor Dykson, do you want to speak?
I reserve my right to speak.
You can now speak.
I have nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to summarise the process a little?
No, I've nothing left, my gentleman.
Thank you. Does the council, thank you. Does the council agree the recommendation as set out in the report? All those for? All those against? Any abstentions.
That's carried chairman.
Thank you. Item eighteen annual members training report twenty four twenty five. The final report for this evening is the annual members training report from the Democratic Services Manager. I understand councillor Wareham is moving this report councillor Wareham you have up to seven minutes.
Thank you very much good evening everybody.
Thank you.
Uh a nice evening one to finish off this evening. I would like to present this report which provides a summary of members' training during twenty twenty four twenty five including details of courses attended both internally and externally and the number of members attending courses. It also provides a look ahead to twenty twenty five twenty six. It's pleasing for me to highlight that thirty five councillors and the mayor have attended at least one training and briefing session this past year. As chair of member development we as a group will continue to help and encourage members to go to partake in training sessions and in the provision of courses. A big thank you to Sandra Hancock for all that she did here thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the report. Could I call on councillor Williams to second the report.
Yep thank you very much chairman and well done to you favour of becoming chairman this evening excellent news. Yes I'd like to second this recommendation and would like to speak now. There's one slight correction on the training record I'd like to highlight it states quarterly tree briefing. These tree briefings are actually annually so if you make that amendment whilst on my feet I'd like to highlight that this year's annual tree briefing is the eleventh of September at six thirty PM. I know that we all love our trees in Watford and it's great to see as many as you possible so that we share our love for our trees. Thursday the eleventh of September thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on this report. Okay. Yeah. Um councillor Wareham do you want to sum up.
Uh that might pipe in my colleague Shoehorn everything that we wanted to say thank you.
No pity to the two of you yeah I know. Thank you. Does the council agree to note the reports all those for. Thank you those against. Any abstention. The report is noted. Motion submitted on under council procedure route thirteen no motions have been received. I'm sure I'd be glad to know that this is the end of full council today and I've made it that we enjoy this evening.